Is this your pen or mine?
Uh, it'll be yours.
I guess I have three today.
Yeah, no, I, I try to be pretty diligent at putting mine back in my drawer after I leave because otherwise they tend to grow legs and walk off.
Well, I walk around a lot with a pen because you never know when you might need one, so I end up with more than I need.
Yeah.
Next, next week, we got maybe four at one o'clock?
Yes, I believe so.
Uh, I don't know what I do this day.
Yeah.
And can I lock, we got twenty?
Twenty, I think.
Is that just grain twenty, no sub, so when they say?
There's this main one and main four.
Yeah.
Oh, main one and main four, okay.
And we do have ten o'clock now, so whenever everyone's ready, we can get started.
I'm ready here.
What?
It is?
Yeah, it is.
All that clock up there? Well, that's, yeah.
It says ten.
That's also ten, but it's ten on our computers. So, um, we can kinda kick off our informational meeting here and you guys all have copies of the information, right?
Yeah.
Alright. Well, I guess, just in general, we scheduled this public.
Do we need to open?
We can, it's an informational meeting, so it's not.
Meeting's open.
Yeah, we can, I would entertain a motion to open this informational meeting.
So.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Now, we can start our conversation.
Okay, sorry.
You're good. So, this, uh, hearing plus others were scheduled for some, providing some extra information in regards to assessments that'd be coming out this fall. This was one of the districts when we reviewed the waivers coming in. We're not going to cover all of what was on there and it looks like a lot of that's crop damages as you guys have the papers and stuff right now, so. I don't know if anyone wants to start with any specific questions or if, Roger, if you remember much about this or anything in that way?
No, we had too many reach.
So, I have a question. What is the stamped warrants interest? Is that interest? Says thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars in some sense. Is that interest on the warrants or is that income to you or is that a charge out or what is that?
No, so that, it'd be.
That's what was issued. That's the full amount that was issued.
That's the total amount?
That was issued, um, after July first of twenty seventeen.
Okay, so that's the warranty deeds that we've received? That haven't been paid yet? I don't understand the thirty-one thousand and a half.
So, the, the, um, warrants that are issued to pay like contractors, engineers, attorneys, whatever, to perform the work for the districts, those start accruing interest at the rate set by the board as soon as we authorize payment. So, that's just the core fundamental of when we pay bills, we don't have the cash sitting in the accounts or most of the time, we don't have the cash sitting in the account, so they start accruing interest.
So, this is a contractor's interest to you, to the taxpayers? They, they submit a bill.
So, it's, it's the same.
You can't pay it, so then?
Yep.
The interest charge goes to the taxpayer.
To the landowners.
The land, the landowners pay it, yes. Yep. Um, and like for the stuff that's outstanding right now with like it's Albona Publishing is the top and then engineering and then crop damages, those crop damages, those waivers or warrants that you guys are holding, you're earning interest on that as well, so.
It's a little different interest.
It's, it's the, whoever holds the warrant is the one that's earning the interest.
So, if the assessment would have been levied at a higher amount, the interest bill would have been less?
Yes.
If you would have.
And, and I think, I think Roger and I talked about this a little bit. Some of these, and Marge, some of these crop damages that were paid after the completion hearing and after the assessments were sent out, that's why they weren't included upfront, so that reas- that kinda covers a lot of the dollar figure that's outstanding right now is those crop damages. I, and I don't know why they came after, I, I don't know any of that timeline wise, but.
How do they assess the crop damages then?
I can't speak to that project, but typically when we do stuff now, the engineer is tracking all of those as the project happens and then that report's provided to all the landowners in the completion report. If there's any objections, the landowners can show yield maps or whatever to show their difference in what the engineer proposed and then, um, so those are paid out on actual acres that are damaged. Um, so this would have been damage you guys would have had back in seventeen or whenever, whenever the project was physically constructed.
And then how do you set a price?
That would have all been set back during the completion hearing, yep. I don't, do you have anything further, Roger?
So, contractor measures acres that are damaged.
What's that?
The contractor measures.
Typically, the engineer does.
The engineer does.
Yep. And this would have been, this would have been something that was approved back in twenty seventeen, so I mean, I'm assuming you guys submitted something for that request?
I did. You did.
Yeah, I, I would imagine yours was probably similar. Um, you'd probably requested something or, or the engineer. So. I don't know.
The reason it wasn't paid in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen is because of funding?
It wasn't assessed out right away.
It wasn't assessed out right away.
Yep.
I hate paying interest.
How is it, is the interest? Simple interest or compound interest or?
I think it's simple.
I think it's simple.
Okay, but it was six percent?
That would have been, yep, but you're also earning six percent interest on your crop damage warrants, which is take, take from one hand and put in the other, um.
When can we be expecting to get any money?
So, with this assessment, then, once, once the taxes are paid, if, if no one signs up for, uh, do we offer waivers on this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, if you sign up for waivers, then over ten years, then you'd you'd have, we would have the money coming in over ten years. If everyone pays it upfront, you could get your money relatively soon after the taxes are paid, so I mean.
If somebody signs a waiver, how long might we have to wait to get paid?
Ten years.
You're kidding.
And there.
It would be almost twenty years from when their actual crop damages were.
Yep. Well, and I think the original project was twenty year waivers, right?
Yes, I saw it here.
Yes.
But if they're, if they're all paid this fall, I mean, there's processing time in between with the treasurer's office and everything, but they would, if everything's paid this fall, they would notify you probably yet this fall, early winter, whatever, and then you'd be able to come and redeem those warrants and be paid.
You have no way to explain your, our ten year waivers?
If they, well, if, yeah, if there's not waivers taken, otherwise, whatever comes in for money, the older bills are paid first, so it's just chronolot- chronological order from there.
Paid in full or pro-rated?
Paid in full. They, they can only call in the warrants when they're able to be fully paid. So, they'll do it in batches or whatever, um.
I still have a warrant. The original, because it's not paid in full.
Yep. Yep. The only one that isn't. It's the one that's water.
So, if somebody, if somebody signs a waiver and we wait ten years and there's still not money in there, in the account, then what?
Well, there's, there's a net zero. I mean, if the waivers equal the amount that gets collected, there's no.
So, the waivers, the waivers pay their own interest, so if someone signs up for waivers for ten thousand out of the forty thousand, um, that was assessed, the other thirty would be coming in right away and that last ten would be over ten years, but they're paying their own interest, so this assessment should take care of everything. I don't know if there's, do you have any other things to add there, Roger?
No. If nobody takes waivers, it'll get paid off in full.
Yeah. But if they do take waivers, the amount that's assessed should still cover what's outstanding. Unless there'd be any new repairs or something, which that's all s- a new thing.
Blair's got a repair in there that was done in.
Couple hundred bucks, yeah.
So, he'd be last on the list.
Yep.
And the rest of them, I look at, look like all of crop damage.
Little bit of engineering.
Yeah.
But yeah, a lot of the purpose of the public hearing was, uh, earlier heads up that this is on the assessment schedule and an opportunity to ask any questions or anything you may have, um, ahead of time.
So, so will you want to go and get that? Why is it? Change owners, change the owners? This is no longer owned by Waymark. That was settled in two thousand nineteen.
That's a previous property owner?
That's a previous property owner.
So, those, those warrants are, are owned by them personally. They don't transfer with the land, um, because that would have been paying for crop damage that they incurred while they were owners.
Are you gonna collect from him? He's deceased.
This is.
This is, this is what we would pay, so if, is, is estate or whoever would have, should have ownership of that warrant.
His estate's closed.
Okay. I don't know.
Nobody claims the warrant, it just expires. If you call it and nobody brings it in, that's their outstanding money.
And they have that.
It stays in the drainage district.
Okay, I.
Say that again?
If we call a warrant and nobody brings it in, in other words, we call, we call whoever your, the last name on that warrant is registered with Nick. So, we call that last name on that warrant.
Yep.
And if we don't get ahold of anybody and nobody brings it in, then that money stays in the drainage district. That's the only thing, only place it can stay.
Yeah, I, I don't know how that's handled.
So, so assessed again to everybody, that amount of money?
No.
No.
That money was a positive, not a negative. In other words, it just, it'll just be a balance in your account.
Cause, cause that, um, list of warrants is like a list of outstanding bills against the district, so if, if one of them isn't collected, then, um, it would be, it would be a positive aspect to the district because it's like they wouldn't be paying that bill or that, that obligation. But yeah, I don't, I don't know how that works with people that are just in the state or.
You, you get issued to anybody? If you're gonna change ownership of that warrant, warrant, you have to go to Nick and change the name on the warrant.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Say we're notified that there's money to pay these warrants. Is there a limited amount of time you have to bring that in or?
The, the letter, the treasurer sends a letter and they'll instruct you on that. You have, it'll tell you what you need to do.
Typically, what is it? Say I'm.
Once they've notified you, then the interest stops after ten days and then you come in and collect it when you are able, I believe, but.
But if you are not able for two months, just, you're just losing out on interest.
That would be a question for me. Yeah, that'd be, the treasurer's office can answer that, I'm not sure.
With the treasurer, you better make a right. If we don't know that it's, if we, I go south for a couple of months in the winter. Say, the notice arrives the day after I leave, I'm not gonna know I've got it until.
Can we call Nick to come in here?
Yeah, I, I check with the treasurer on that because he handles all that, so I check with him and, and find out how he handles that.
Oh, we'll see if Carter can call Nick, cause I think he was sitting in there. Do you know what number he is?
Yeah, call Nick in a minute.
I don't.
I don't know how he handles that.
Okay, Carter, sure.
I can go grab him and see if he's available.
We have no way to speed up this process, so we're not paying so much interest.
He was with customers, we'll be right back.
Okay, um, so with.
For new, new drainage districts assessments, so there's no, so when it's paid, like in two thousand, whenever it was, everything is paid in two thousand seventeen, right? The contractor, then there's all these other things that come in, crop damages and so forth. And then that's carried out for a long period of time.
Yeah, so this, this should, you're probably concerned about repeating this on sixty sub four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that shouldn't happen.
It shouldn't happen.
We've.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I mean, that's, that's our, I'm, I'm gonna say that's a board responsibility and I've asked for, I mean, I've asked Marge for more information than the board previously has had and we will stay on top of that going forward.
And we're changing some of the spreadsheets and the way we do things in the auditor's office than is done in the past so that we can, um, prevent that from happening, um, in the future, so we are working on some of those changes as well.
So, are you gonna update your program that you use?
Not the programming, but just the worksheets that we use, um, yes. We're getting information from other counties, um, and trying to, you know, um, make it, you know, a little bit.
Clear.
Yeah, a little bit clearer for everybody and it has more fields in it so that we can look at the whole picture instead of just part of the picture.
Yep.
Okay. So, will this entail more work for Marge or us?
Well, hopefully it'll be easier for her because she'll be able to look at one place for the information instead of multiple places.
Right, I have to collect it, put it in one place, so that it'll be more clear.
Because there's so many drainage districts being done.
There is.
There is.
That was another one, just wanted to be a help.
Yes.
Doing that.
Yeah.
You know, cause it took us so long.
Yeah. So.
So, we, and we go through the same assessment process every year, um, so it's not, it's not really changing the core substance of what we do, it's just having the board have a little more information so that we can make sure everything is on the right track. Um, so, yeah, sixty sub four, this should not happen on sixty sub four. We, we will have increased information and, and confirm that that is being assessed the right amount upfront. Um, but to address your question, Nick, there was a question about, um, when stamped warrants are called in, like you guys have money to pay them and you call in a stamped warrant, is there a certain timeframe that they have to come in by or what do they need to know?
Well, when we send the letter, um, we let, we let who's gonna be receiving the letter, uh, know that in ten days, after ten days, um, the interest stops, so.
Yep.
The interest, you paid interest up to ten days, uh, the date of call in. And then after that, I mean, I know there are some, I think everything is in that's been called.
Do they have like a thirty days or sixty days or ninety days to come in and pick it up or they expire forever?
No, they don't expire.
Okay, so they just stay on your record?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't expire, it's just that interest stops ten days after, uh, call in day.
And, and what happens if somebody's deceased?
That, I mean, that has happened. It usually goes to fam- I mean, the family has that and they haven't figured out what, um,
So, if the.
Where that warrant should go and, and whatever.
If the family has stamped.
A lot of times, a lot of times what they'll do is they'll have a family member take assignment to that stamp certificate and then that, so then they notify us saying, the stamp board is being held by this person now, so we can change our records, so we, we, uh, contact the correct person when it's time to call in.
Okay.
His, his question was, if he goes on vacation, you send a letter, he doesn't get the letter.
For a month or two.
For a month or two, is that a problem?
Well, it's just that we have that outstanding warrant, it's not a problem, it's, um, you won't be earning interest, um, after ten days. But, uh, no, it's, they don't expire.
So, the only, the only issue is you wouldn't be earning interest ten days after the letter?
And we'd like to see him sent in as soon as possible.
Right.
In ten days because then that helps us, um, you know, we know what we have called in and so when there's a balance, when we're sitting there at the end of the month and there's a balance in the fund, we know that, hey, that balance has already been, uh, you know, we have some work for that to go and not to call it anymore. So, we're going to the negative.
Definitely, Nick, I don't ever remember that we had a person deceased or died and then the land got sold and there was an outstanding warrant.
You, you say you know of one or?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't ever remember one.
But the, the warrants aren't connected with the land.
No.
The warrants are paid for the crop damage that was incurred, so it's, it's not tied with the farm and that was, that was their question earlier.
If they lose the warrant, if the family loses the warrant.
Then go see Marge. Get a.
But nobody ever claims one, I don't, that's never happened, has it?
Yeah, we'll have duplicates issued because they.
No, I mean, that if, nobody even asked for one after.
What happens, what happens if you send notification to someone who's deceased and their estate's closed and you can't find any point of contact? If, if you can't find someone to.
We haven't had that happen, so.
Okay, that's.
If it doesn't, um.
That's the question, yep.
Yeah, it's just something. I, I hope we never have to deal with it.
I've never remembered.
I don't either. I don't either.
Most people hang on to that.
There, yeah, most people are, you know, responsible, keep them in a safe place and they know what, what is going on with them and if they have to, um, say that, they know they're gonna pass away before it's called then, they'll assign it to a child or whoever.
Okay.
So, it's, we know who to contact to call in.
Okay. Thanks for that information, Nick. Do you guys have any other questions for Nick or about the stamped warrants in that regard?
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, anything on the drain as a whole for questions or other comments?
So, this new forty thousand, is that a ten year thing there or?
You'd have the option for it.
You have an option, if you want.
You don't have to take that, it's an option.
Then you don't get paid.
The, the people, the people on the list don't get paid. But, I mean, the good part is we can directly correlate a lot of this to crop damages that were turned in after the hearing and I mean, it's just, that's the cost of the project, so it should have, should have probably been assessed earlier, but we're, we're trying to make sure everything's square now.
So, the next goal, um, it's gonna be much smoother, quicker and so forth, so you may improve this.
Yep.
All this is.
Yep. Alright. If nothing else, I would entertain a motion to close our informational hearing. Meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you guys for coming to visit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you got any other questions or whatever, feel free to reach out. Do again. Now, I'll have another.
Sometimes I want to talk to you about that.
Yep.
Because, um, when I was talking to, I can't remember what county, um, they don't have any of these issues because their treasurer buys all their stuff towards us. Nope, it wasn't Hancock. I think, I can't remember, but, and, and it eliminates a lot of issues and.
Oh, what we have.
It's, and then it listen, it eliminates people containing those due to warrants too because they're not waiting ten and twenty years to get their money. And so, I don't know anything about it, I don't know what, how much work it is, but, but I think this is something that needs to be talked about.
Yep.
I've had a couple contractors talk to me about it too, on that. I, I think Hancock does, the treasurer does buy them over there. And it may not be the one you talked to, but I know what they do because, uh, who's the limestone to reach out to me? Mentioned, oh, Cody Dornberger reached out to me, cause he does a lot of county work in Hancock County, um, and he prefers working for them because.
Because he gets paid, yeah, and I agree, I think.
I think there's a limited. I think there's also, there's also some confusion on, um, what people can do with those because a lot of our local banks will buy them, so like the, the individuals on the, on this list and any other list don't have to hold them.
But are they aware of that? Are they given that?
No, that's what, that's what I mean, I, I think there's a lot of confusion around that. And some, some better education would maybe help there, but.
Yeah, I'm trying to find.
That is, that is an option and I, I mean, yeah.
I think it's Wright County.
They could, but the caveat to that is you have to have the funds available internally in the county to be able to buy them all, and we have a three million dollar project every time we turn around, um.
But we're also earning interest on those too, so it is a potential.
Income source.
Yes.
And, and actually with.
Depends on how the economy goes.
Right.
So, with the interest rates right now, I think Nick's. So with the interest rates right now, I think Nick said we're starting, we're up in that five or six percent rate. Which we could have had that all along, we could have had that five years ago or six years ago with drainage warrants, so I mean. Yeah, it is something we probably need to look at a bigger percentage, but our investments are so good right now. It's.
We talked about it before, but they wouldn't invest in any.
So it's Wright County that their treasurer buys.
Right.
They have to be.
So Wright and Hancock both must do that.
Yeah.
Well, and and then that relies on the assessments from the board being large enough to cover those warrants. So that the treasurer gets paid back and can keep rolling it.
You know, when the, it might be a slow process to start if you have big projects, but eventually.
We've, we've already started with some.
Yeah, he does buy.
He's, he buys some already.
He does buy some, yeah.
Yeah, we started that here in the last year or two?
Yeah.
Two years probably.
But not.
Not all of them.
Yeah.
He started with smaller ones to be able to work in, but we have to, we have to be assessing enough on all those drains. So that the first money gets paid back and can go back into the pot and keep recirculating, so it's still fundamentally comes back to the assessment process.
Right, oh you get, you have to have that process, but I'm just saying that the process. Some of the issues we're having now could be potentially eliminated.
But the person owning them doesn't change the problem, the person owning them just changes who would be complaining about it.
Well, then it'd be us, so we can come complain to ourselves.
True, but it it still fundamentally goes back to the assessment process in the beginning. Um if we fix that, the landowners won't be upset because they'd be paid right away.
And and that's, that's.
So it it.
You know, I mean.
Regardless of who owns them is my point, um that is, that is a good suggestion and good possibility, but.
You just wanna make sure that the interest rate on the warrants is more than what the interest rate on the banks charge or we give you.
For something secure.
If you're a landowner, you mean, and you're selling it to the bank?
Well.
Either way.
Either way.
No, yeah, either either way for like, cause I think we're kinda borderline right now, but when we. Went to five percent from six percent, any um.